Ready to start? All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Select Board meeting for Monday, April 1st, 2024. My name is Anthea Brady and I am joined by my colleagues Michelle Pryor, John Fallon, Mike Bettencourt, and Bill McGonigal, our newest member. So we will go straight to our first order of business, which is the Select Board reorganization. Turn it to Beth. Thank you. So we will dissolve the board to a committee of the whole for the purpose of reorganizing, and the Town Manager, Beth Rudolph, will preside.
Thank you. So I would open the floor first for nominations for Chair of the Select Board.
So I would like to nominate Michelle Pryor for Chair. Second.
Thank you. Do we have any further nominations for Chair? Seeing no further nominations, I will move the matter to a vote. The motion is that Michelle Pryor be nominated to serve as Chair of the Select Board for the Town of Winchester. All those in favor?
Do we have a chance to deliberate?
Sure.
Because I'm new to the board, it's almost a little unfair to put this on you right away, but there was something I wanted to say. I haven't had a chance to work with any of the four of you in this context yet, and I'm happy that of all four of you, I think you'd be wonderful Chairs. That's very easy to say. But one thing I think that we should just kind of think about is that there has been a lot of contestation over the Chair in the past couple of years that wasn't always for the best, perhaps, and I'd like to see us maybe move more towards some more procedural norms. I'm going to be very happy knowing Michelle's the Chair, but I think we should start thinking about how we do this in the future as well. We have a wealth of talent of people who volunteer and then spend two, three years on this board, and I think with that, they bring a real strong ability to be the Chair. They've put in the time, they've put in the effort. And maybe thinking to make this process more administrative and less political, we should start thinking about establishing a norm where the Chair is a third-year member of the board, one who probably served as Vice Chair the year prior, and Vice Chair being filled by someone who's in their second year, so they have the chance to get the experience and groom and come up and be the new Chair. Now that said, I'm not looking forward, I'm not looking to make big changes tonight, but I think this is something that we might want to aspire to moving forward, and Michelle, if you're going to be the new Chair, that might just be something that you keep in your mind when this goes forward next year. And of course, you would be a third-year member next year with a ton of experience, but I think that we have a lot to gain by just creating some more stability and obvious expectations with what we do moving forward. That said, I think you're going to do a great job, Michelle, if you become Chair, but those were my opinions coming in as a guy who hasn't had a chance but to watch you guys on TV before now.
Yeah, I would echo Bill's remarks. It's certainly appreciated, and I think that us getting together to focus on creating some norms for how we operate, what the expectations are, just like the school committee does. We've got the school committee chair here tonight, and it's, I think, will help us move forward and function well and really exemplify governance. So thanks, Bill, I appreciate that.
Any further comments? Okay, great. The nomination process is closed, and I will take a vote on the motion on the floor for Michelle Pryor to move forward as the Chair of the Select Board. I'll do a roll call vote. John?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Anthea?
No.
Mike?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Motion passes 4-1. Next, I will open the floor for nominations for Vice Chair of the Select Board.
I'll move to nominate, sorry. I'll move to nominate Anthea for lots of the reasons I just said. I think spending a year as the Vice Chair makes her a very obvious candidate to continue that good work that she has done and can help us move forward in more stable fashion.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I've served as Vice Chair for two years, so I will decline the nomination.
Thank you. No second? Any further nominations?
I nominate John Fallon, Vice Chair.
Any further nominations? Okay. With that, the nominations are closed. Any comment, discussion?
So I think for John, he's going into his third year, and I think it'll be good to have an opportunity to be in a leadership role of the board, should either Anthe or John choose to run or not run. I think it's a good experience that everyone should get at some point in their three-year term, so happy that John now has to make lots of motions from a history of not making hardly any. Appreciate that he raised his hand.
This might be more of a question than a comment, because I know, Michelle and John, you both serve as kind of our representatives to the Capitol Committee, which is a very important role. Is that going to continue as we move forward? Because it seems like having both Chair and Vice Chair in the same sort of bucket.
So there is no formal Select Board representative, something member representative on Capitol. John has served as a liaison, as other board members have in the past. Typically, either at your next meeting or sometimes after town meeting, the board will evaluate your roles on various boards and committees and decide if you want to make changes at that point.
And I used to think, not Capitol.
Oh, my apologies.
Though we're working on pretty similar topics, but yeah.
Yeah.
John goes to Capitol.
Thank you for giving me an extra education in my first meeting here today.
There'll be lots of that.
Yes. Please don't hold back.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, with that, the nominations are closed, and I will move for a vote on the motion for John Fallon to become the Vice Chair of the Select Board. I'll do a roll call vote. Michelle?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Anthea?
Yes.
And Bill?
Yes.
And John?
Yes.
Great. Motion passes 5-0. Congratulations to you all. We will take a brief intermission for a photo opportunity, and we'll be back with one camera in just a few minutes.
So get ready, John, because we're going to start with acceptance of donations, and then we're going to do public comment, and then we'll go to the Town Manager's report. So, if you could.
So I make a motion for, to accept donation. Sound good? Excited about this? That we accept with gratitude donations of $277 to the Council on Aging for Appreciation of Transportation Services provided.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So we're going to, Beth graciously is going to let us jump over her Town Manager report tonight, but we will invite public comment. So we didn't sign in, but if you could raise your hand so I know at least who I'm going to be calling on, Mr. Hopcroft, the gentleman behind, okay? Anybody else here for public comment? No? Okay. Tom, if you'd like to come up and state your name and where you live, and we'll give you three minutes.
Great. I'm Tom Hopcroft, 99 Pond Street, speaking as a concerned resident. Congratulations first to Bill and Mike on the election, and thank you to the entire Select Board for your focus on student safety in connection with school expansion projects, and particularly the new Lynch. The Pond Street community sent a detailed letter, now with 60 signatures on it, and I'll touch just a few key highlights on that. At last year's Springtown meeting, we voted on Article 14 to appropriate $400,000 for engineering services for traffic improvements, quote, "associated with the Lynch Project and in the surrounding neighborhoods." The Article 14 presentation noted that voters had approved a $400,000 general override in January of 2023 to be directed to the Capital Stabilization Fund for, quote, "this specific purpose," and that traffic improvements are estimated to cost about $3 million. The Pond Street community and many others in town understood that Pond Street, a road directly abutting the Lynch Elementary School, upon which all school buses and half of the cars arrive and depart the school daily, that carries 75% of the area's traffic volume and that has the highest recorded traffic speeds, would be included in the traffic calming, safety, engineering, design work anticipated in Article 14. However, at the recent Select Board meeting on March 11th, Erica Duboni of Tool Design, the town's contracted engineering services firm, noted that, quote, "Pond Street, the corridor itself, is not particularly part of this project." The Pond Street community is supportive of the traffic improvements recommended by Tool Design on Royal, Middlesex, Canal, Brantwood, Woodside, Norfolk, and Chesterford roads, but are perplexed by the omission of Pond Street from the scope of traffic calming, given the disproportionate impact on safety it represents in the neighborhood surrounding Lynch Elementary School. We understand that the implementation of the work outlined by Tool is estimated to cost $2.5 million of the original $3 million estimate, so cost doesn't seem to be the barrier. We urge the Select Board to instruct Tool to add meaningful traffic calming measures on Pond Street itself into the project's scope for which funding will be requested at Springtown meeting. As we've noted in the letter, Pond Street is a narrow road with impaired sightlines, minimum shoulders, homes within feet of the road, and continuous sidewalk only on one side of the road, with about 250 vehicles recorded on each school day studied traveling over 40 miles an hour, and at least one in excess of 70 miles an hour on each day. Crossing the street to get to the sidewalk to walk to school is a life-threatening proposition. As a result, many families who live in walking distance of the school feel they must drive their kids to school unnecessarily increasing congestion at drop-off and pickoff. The increase in heavy trucks on Pond Street over the past decade is also a significant concern. When the geometry of the Pond Street-Cambridge Road intersection was changed, adding turning lanes and a traffic light, and the heavy truck restriction signs removed at the Woburn end of the corridor, the town failed to consider the, quote, "effective width of pavement structure, which can safely accommodate the additional truck traffic on Pond Street," and should have put in place measures to ensure that truck traffic from other routes was not shifted onto Pond Street. In closing, the Pond Street community would like to work with the Select Board to continue to enhance student safety in the neighborhoods around the new Lynch Elementary School, to ensure that Pond Street traffic calming is included in the Lynch School project, student safety improvements that come before Springtown meeting for funding, and return the heavy trucking restrictions or implement other measures to shift heavy trucking traffic back to the routes that more safely accommodated them prior to the change that enabled them to begin traversing Pond Street about a decade ago. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you.
John McSwinney, 47 Pond Street in Winchester. Also here with Tom as well about the traffic concerns, though I don't have as eloquent a formal statement, I would like to say that the process for communication was rather limited. We received a mail notice, and apparently not all of our neighbors do, just direct abutters. The most recent meeting about the traffic was at the same time as the Lynch Parent Association meeting, and we're having to choose between whether to attend the Parent Association or traffic. I feel that the voices of the concerned citizens have not been heard. I have a concern that only direct abutters were introduced, whereas other people walking to the school over those streets are not included, and I think the whole Lynch school community should be involved in this. I've lived on Pond Street for 12 years now, and we've seen increased traffic. The no heavy truck sign at the end of Lake was taken down sometime during the Eversource Expansion Project. We've seen the end of Pond Street at Cambridge expanded, and increasingly you see semi-trucks every day, including today, seeing one speeding down the street towards a tight bend. The tight bends are frequently not cut back and overgrown, and especially in the summer months, very difficult to see if there's people riding bicycles or running on the opposite side of the street where there's no sidewalk. I just want to make sure that the community is heard and has a chance to be input into this. We do appreciate that they're narrowing the entrances at Chesterford and narrowing the entrances at Wildwood, but there seems to be no activity to limit the speed on Pond Street, given that it was the original design of the school, that the buses all came in on that side. It's quite concerning for bus traffic and children walking to school.
Thank you.
Thank you for your attention.
Appreciate. Thank you for coming tonight. Anybody else? Yes, here for public comment?
I would like to.
Okay.
My name is Frank Seitman. I live at 136 Pond Street, and I've been there for 46 years, and the reason I'm speaking out is really entirely selfish. I've seen traffic increase a lot in the last 46 years, but selfishness, I just don't want it to get killed. And I've seen too many accidents at Chesterford and Pond, and the volume and the speed of trucks and fast cars is just increasing. That's all I can add. I'm just, I just don't want to die.
Thank you.
And I also don't want anyone else to die.
Thank you. Anybody else here for public comment? Okay. With that, I'll close public comment. I think for the board, when we take up Springtown meeting warrant articles, I'd want to maybe talk with the Town Manager, let's take up some of these concerns a little bit later this evening. What's in scope, what's not in scope, and I think to the extent that no trucking signs may not be part of a Lynch improvement program, but we'll talk to you. And maybe Bob, if you can stick it through too, we may ask what DPW's role is in that, but we'll take that up a little bit later. So thank you for coming in, everybody, and thank you for the letter, Mr. Hopcroft, and from all of your neighbors as well. Okay, so now we will move to the Town Manager's report.
Thank you. A couple appointments first this evening. In accordance with Section 4-2B of the Town Charter, I've made the following regular full-time appointment in the Department of Public Works for Water and Sewer Operations Manager of Daniel Stone King of Billrica. He is replacing Jim Gibbons, who was, served the town for almost 40 years. I respectfully requested the board vote to waive the customary 15-day appointment period.
All those in favor? Oh, John, make the motion. Sorry.
I don't want to get all three at once.
Nope.
Make the motion that we waive the 15-day waiting period for DPW Water and Sewer Operations Manager, Daniel Stone King.
Seconded.
Thank you, Bill. Now, take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And second, in accordance with Section 4-2B of the Town Charter, I've made the following permanent full-time dispatcher appointments in the Police Department of Tanya DiNino for the, of the full-time civilian chief dispatcher, and Molly Champa, a full-time civilian dispatcher. And I requested the board wait, vote to waive the 15-day appointment period.
Make a motion that we waive the 15-day waiting period for Police Department Chief Dispatcher, Tanya DiNino, and Police Department Dispatcher, Molly Champa.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you. I don't have too many updates since we met last week, but I did just want to touch on a few things going into town meeting that we've scheduled the Town Manager's hearing for, I think it's Wednesday, Wednesday, April 24th at 6:30 PM. That will be a virtual Zoom meeting. Springtown meeting starts the next Monday, April 29th. Also, we will start active enforcement of our transportation permits on April 15th. So anybody who has not already purchased a transfer station sticker, although they are now virtual stickers, you still need one to get into the transfer station, and please contact the Town Clerk's Office. You can go onto the town's website, you can come into the Town Clerk's Office to get your permit. But starting April 15th, we will be actively enforcing and not allowing folks who have not paid into the station. And I think that's really all I have on updates for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Beth. Okay. I'm moving right along then. Transfer station commercial recycling rates. It's your time to shine.
Bob LaBos here, Director of Public Works, here with Nick Parley, who runs our transfer station, and Nick did some work coming up with some fees for the new commercial recycling.
Yeah, so I'd like to put forward that these fees, in my mind, are reflective of the next three months through the end of the fiscal year. We are currently out to bid for recycling services now. This fee is a break-even fee for us for recycling. This gives us some time to, you know, understand how much volume we're going to get, how best to use this. This isn't something that we've done before. This was part of the transfer station renovation project that's recently been completed. This allows our commercial customers to tip a truck, dump a truck into a compactor, and this $1.55 fee will be a break-even point with our hauling cost and our recycle processing cost, $1.55 per ton.
So how does this stack up against other communities and, you know, and really competition?
Unfortunately, we're kind of locked into what we're paying contractually right now. So I would say it's higher than other communities.
What do you prognosticate on new rates?
There's hoping. We're paying around $100 a ton now. I would, I'd like to see it around 70.
Is that realistic?
I mean, there's a little bit of hope mixed in there.
Speaking to existence, right?
No, I don't know if rates have been down in the last year or two years, or what it looks like.
The thing is, the most recycle haulers and processors are moving towards a variable rate, you know, rates that fluctuate month to month, and you get that, you know, $70 when you average it over the cost of the year. Towns usually don't like that, and they push back and try to get a fixed rate, which, you know, protects you from, you know, the ceiling, but we'll, we'll see where it goes. We've bid it out as both fixed rates and variable rates.
When you get a variable rate, can you do a min-max?
You could. It, you know, every company has a different spin on it. For example, Waste Management has, you know, if you go over your allotted budget, you're allowed to pay the following year. Republic does a min-max. There's all sorts of different ways you can look at it.
Thank you.
Other questions?
I'm just taking a look at, we voted in November for the rates overall. Have paid for my transfer station permit officially now after we got the slip. So this is like a fairly big gap between sort of the commercial solid rate and recycling rate. Is that just typical sort of in other areas that recycling costs are higher than?
Right now, what we're charging for commercial solid waste for our vendors is $1.75 a ton for bagged waste. So the bagged waste is higher than recycling in this case.
Thank you.
Mr. Nowell, would you like to comment on this? As a potential user of the transfer station? I'm going to invite you to the table if you'd like.
Well, I really came just to listen, but I don't mind telling everyone that I think it's a great move. We've been looking for a place that we could recycle. We've been recycling out of town for probably nine years, and, you know, it's give and take, although it's wonderful, recycling Winchester saved me costs from driving down there, and... But on the other hand, I look at it like, not so much for me, my tonnage is going out of town now, so anything I bring in, you're gonna, it's gonna be there, and you have to make money on that, or at least break even. But for the other recyclers who haven't had this opportunity to recycle by dumping, I wonder whether we're really incentivizing, I mean, they can dump for, recycle for 150 or dump for 175. We say, well, 25, that's, what's wrong with that? But there's, they gotta change their whole system. They're not used to loading a truck and bringing it in and dumping it. But overall, I'm very grateful for the program and it's, we certainly got to start somewhere. Whether this is exactly right or not, we'll see. But it's a move in the right direction definitely, and I give everyone credit for making sure that it gets done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? So if we make this change, the fees would be in effect as of?
As of when you say the fees are effective.
I mean, you're looking for three months. So April, May, June, May, June, July. I'm just trying to understand effective, you know, start and end dates.
We will have a new recycling commercial rate for the town and a new haul rate come July 1st.
Right.
So I'll be probably coming back in a month or so after town meeting, letting you know what the new rate is and what I propose the rate is after July.
Right. A different break-even number, number potentially.
Or, or 10% or, you know, we'll, we're going to figure out how to best use this new area. You know, maybe my assumptions are a little wrong. Maybe we need to go up or down on that.
Okay.
I wouldn't vote an end date. We will come back if we need to change it, but I would just vote a rate effective tomorrow if we're comfortable with that and then we can come back if we need to.
Okay. Any other questions for the group? Are we generally comfortable with that change? Any other information, Bob or Nick, that we need to know? Okay.
You have everything.
Yeah. You got to start somewhere, right?
Yeah.
And just to, just to add, we are looking at some exciting grant opportunities from DEP. Me and Ken Peru, the State Ability Manager, are looking at some recycling grants that we're going to hope drive down our recycling cost.
Great. Look forward to hearing about that, too. Speak that's the universe while you're at it. Okay.
So I'll make a motion that we create a commercial recycling fee of $155 per ton as presented effective 4/24.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Ms. Ward, Contributory Retirement Pension, Board Pension Funding Update.
Good evening. Thank you for squeezing me in.
Do you have a call point?
No. I'm here wearing two hats, one as the comptroller and one as the ex-officio member of the Board of Retirement. We, as the, the Board of Retirement, was presented with a question, an inquiry from Finance Committee to change the funding table that we adopted last fall. I wrote up in a memo, a little bit of the history. I'll just repeat it briefly. We received a draft letter from PERAC. They provided us a really, really good news in relation to our pension funding. We're at 92% based on their, their report. And we were provided with three alternatives. I present, usually every time we have an actuarial report, I go to town management, I go to the select board, I go to Finance Committee, get some feedback before the retirement board makes a vote. And that's what I did in the fall and we all felt fairly comfortable with alternative number two, which we adopted. The retirement board voted at, I'm not sure what the date of their meeting was, but they voted that last fall and then PERAC finalized their report. And all this really means is that there's a funding table we have to follow. It's required. Once we select a funding table, it was my understanding in the past that we couldn't change it, especially after they've issued their report. However, we did reach out to John Borack, who is the actuary at PERAC, who said that there is some flexibility. If the retirement board really wanted PERAC to rerun numbers and adopt a new funding table, we could, surprise to me. So that's what we did. We had our actuary run a bunch of different alternatives, all of which are to lessen the FY '25 appropriation. And FinCom had a couple of requests, but their initial requests weren't going to work, but they had said, how about we run a flat amount from FY '24 through FY '28 and see where that leads us. And in my opinion, and what I would recommend is to leave the funding table alone. We've made this commitment. We've been committing to pay this unfunded liability for many years. And I think we should just stick to the plan. And that's my opinion. I'm one vote on the retirement board. Others might feel a little differently. What, what's another year? Right now, the table puts us in a position where we're paid off by the end of FY '27. If we select any of the other tables, it's the end of FY '28. And looking at the alternative that the Finance Committee recommended, it was going to cost about $200,000, $190,000 more in the long run over the next three years versus where we are now. So to save $230,000 in FY '25, but to pay almost $200,000 over the next couple of years just didn't seem worth it to me. But like I said, that's my opinion. I think we should stick to the commitment. We want to get this paid down. We have other long-term liabilities to consider and that's my position. And I told the retirement board that I'd come to you all and find out if you had any objection to making the change or if you had any objection to, not an objection, but if you feel like we should make the change. Like I said, it's about a $236,000 reduction in FY '25's pension appropriation if we were to make a change.
Stacy, now, I know you don't work for a bond rating agency, all right?
No, I don't.
But the question is, so we come up with a plan and here's our plan.
Yeah.
And they say, okay, that sounds good. And then we change sort of midstream. And do they, would they be better about us changing midstream? I know this is total speculation.
Absolutely.
Or using free cash? Because it's one of the, right, that's just, or, or reducing services. All right. There's the three buckets. But what's your thinking on that?
I, I, I see both sides. I see where we've, we've told the bond rating agencies that this is what our actuarial report, reported to us and this is what we accepted for funding, because it's not just pension, it's also OPEB. So we have a pension plan. Let's get that funded as soon as we can and then we move on to OPEB. So the dual plan is to, to make the commitment to fund them both. But OPEB is a whole other dream, whole other issue. And so this is really, let's get this done as soon as we can. We told the bond rating agencies, this is what we have, this is what, this is what our plan is. And even we adopted the OPEB funding policy, well, the select board did, which Michelle's already going to raid for capital. I'm like, no. Spoiler alert. Yes. So anyway, I, I, I don't know how they would feel whether we're giving up $230,000 of free cash versus our commitment. I don't know what wins. But in the financial models and our forecasting, we knew there was going to be a budget gap. We know from just planning and there's a lot that goes into these forecasts. So many things can change. And our replenishment of free cash over the last several years seems to offset what we've been using. And we've used free cash to balance the budget many, many years prior to my arrival. So I'm not saying that's a good thing, but it's not out of the ordinary to use free cash here and there to help balance things when we're trying to put ourselves in a position where we even need an override. We've got a lot of issues in the air, CPA coming, the Lynch borrowing coming that's hitting everybody's tax bill. So and a general override, that's another big question that's in the plans. When we did the override from 2020, we, we thought it would stretch three years, but we've actually made it work even further. So I think that's a positive on our end. So to me, I feel, this is just my opinion, that focusing on our commitment that we've already voted on and have already been prepared to fund is what I would recommend. But I'm one voice on the retirement board and I told them I'd find out for you all.
Other questions?
Hello, by the way.
Stacy, that's Bill.
Nice to meet you.
So Stacy, it sounds like, you know, the, it looks like the difference between the two you said was $190,000 maybe?
Yeah, if you look at, I mean.
Payment this year.
If, if you look at what we're paying based on the alternative schedule that we adopted, based on the funding table that FinCom has recommended, over time, the delta's close to $200,000. But in FY '25, they want to keep FY '25 flat with FY '24. I think it's about $235,000.
I mean, I think, you know, and we, the last time we talked about this and you presented this to us, the opportunity to fully fund this and move to OPEB seemed like, you know, one, that it was, you know, ahead of schedule that, that we were able to do that. And two, that being able to wrap that up and focus on OPEB was really important. So I think I would lean towards, you know, continuing as, I would lean toward continuing with the recommendation that we had provided previously and, and not making any midstream changes.
So I might be the dissenting voice here saying, thinking that, but I have a question before I decide that this might be a good idea. We would have been done in FY '27, at the end of '27 or halfway into '28? The current schedule gets us?
We'd be done by the end of '27. Actually, right, '25 is a 5% increase from '24, '26 is a 5%, and then '27 is a decrease down to, I think, hold on one second. It's in my notes here somewhere. It goes down about 7%. So it's a 5% increase, another 5% increase and a decrease down 7%. And then we're done and fully funded by then, according to this. I mean, every two years we get an actuary and we're pondering doing the actuarial studies every year now since we're so close to being fully funded. We don't want to miss anything. We don't want to be too, I don't know, I don't, PERAC wants you to be 120% funded. So are we ever going to be fully funded? That's the, that's the question of the day. But this, this has us being done by 2027.
And the revised schedule then to smooth it out, hold it flat in '25, potentially hold it flat in '26 gets us, it's just, it's 10 months later, 12 months later, nine months later?
Well, we have, we have zero increases and then a drop by 29%. So I don't know, I mean, it's a difference between 6.8 million in 2027 versus, let's see, 6.9 million in 2027. But that's difficult because each year you've got accrued interest, so it's hard to say. And that's what the $190,000 is, is if we, as we push, we pay more in interest.
Yes. So we do pay more in interest, though we do anticipate, so that, I mean, I talked to FinCom Chair last week. The idea was we have a large operating deficit going into the FY '25 budget. And if we were able to save $230,000 this year and spread that cost over the next two years, it could help, not just this year, but also the following years. And we know that by the last year, yes, we're paying some additional interest, but we also know that eventually that goes away. So, and to John's point, we're, we're using free cash to close the budget likely. So we could have $236,000 more in free cash by making this change. So I tend to think it's a good idea. It's kind of creative thinking because we have a pretty large deficit. Question for you, I know you don't speak for the retirement board. Did you take a SROB poll? Did you take a vote as a board?
No, we didn't. Because we hadn't had the tables. We didn't see how far out they were going to go and what amounts they were. We were just meeting to, to vote to actually have PERAC. PERAC wanted us to vote to actually make the changes in the tables. So we called a meeting together quickly. We got the tables last Thursday and we're trying to set up a meeting this week to, to meet, probably either Thursday morning or Friday, to make a vote.
Stacy, how does the flat funding compare to any of the options that you presented to us?
The other three options, let's see. Option one went up 7% each year, so that was even higher of an appropriation for FY ' '25 and FY '26. And then alternative three had it growing by 2.5%. So that was a $7 million, that was like a, another, let's see, I'm trying to find. That's about $125,000 difference. This is really bad quick math.
We're not going to hold you to it.
And vacation brain, sorry, just flew in today. So yeah, there's, there's a bunch of different alternatives and I do, I do understand closing the gap in any way we can. I do, I do really appreciate the thought outside the box and trying to make ends meet.
Can you talk a little bit, if, if the retirement board was to vote to make this change, what would be the process after that, knowing that we're not that far away from the start of town meeting?
Yeah, we would have to vote. We'd have to select a new table at our next meeting and then PERAC would just redo the table, finalize, redo the report. And then we would just let FinCom know what the number is for FY '25. And I think John said.
And they can do that in that timely manner.
We're going to do the best we can. Even if it has to, if we pause it on the floor and I think FinCom needed it by the eighth or the ninth. That might be tight, but we'll do the best we can to get another retirement board meeting in this week. Because one of our retirement board members requested an additional table. I forget the specifics of it and we sort of wanted that before we got it, but I don't know if we'll get that in time to meet this week.
April 9th. I'm thinking May.
April 9th, yeah. Eighth or ninth. I think he said eighth or ninth.
Okay.
So we're, we're going to try and do the best we can to make it happen. And I know I'm only one board member. I do feel like others are willing to make the change. Not that I'm not willing, I just feel more about the commitment and.
I think it's important for you to come and, and we need to understand the implications. So I don't know that we need to make a motion. You all might take, you're trying to take the term for the select board.
Yeah, just try to, I'm trying to get some feedback.
We'll just go around, right? Maybe show of hands, like I'm, I'm in favor, I think. I think I'm in favor of it will close the delta this year, it will smooth out potentially the FY '26. Yes, there's always investment earnings. Yes, there's always changes in the market. That gap could grow slightly. It could actually shrink depending on how the market is.
There will be a change. If we do end up doing a 1-124 actuary, this whole table might even change. And we do want every other year, so by 1-125, the FY '27 appropriation will change based on that. So this is always a moving target. It's really just about, right now, it's really about FY '25.
Right. And what we're going to put toward contributor retirement in the budget, so, okay. So I've said my piece. Maybe Bill and then I'll go Anthea around just to give Stacy a sense. Hey, I went to this select board meeting and there are like, a couple of them or whatever. Maybe, do you want to end with you, Bill? Do you want to? I want to put you on the spot.
Are you ready for this?
As I'm playing catch-up, I'm going to be relying heavily on people's opinion like you or Stacy. You, you know this better than I do. You probably know it better than anybody else at this table. If you're recommending stay with the plan, that's where I'm going to be and it's going to be hard to move me off that. But one thing I'm getting from, from your presentation is that this might be a little rushed because there's a lot to be done and it's an idea that just came forward.
Yes.
It doesn't mean it's a bad idea, but I, I'm always hesitant to, you know, cause confusion or, or change what we're doing, even if it's a good idea, without making sure we've flushed it out all the way. And is this something that we could revisit, you know, next year? Or is this like our drop dead, we got to do this now or never sort of point?
I think it's pretty much now or never for this, for the FY '25 appropriation, unfortunately. And yes, it was a little, it came to my attention at the beginning of my vacation, I think. I left, beginning of, middle, I don't even remember when I left, but. And it came to me with the, with the expression that, oh, we didn't know we had such a big budget gap to close, which I don't know what, what they were looking at. Because we, in our forecast, we've had budget gaps for the next three years. So I, I do think it's a little bit rushed, but it's, I, we're going to try to make something happen and try to flush out the issues and differences and see where we land.
Yeah. I mean, I'm, I'm all in favor of research and new ideas, but I, I don't, don't, I'm nervous maybe because I'm new, rushing into something that we haven't really seen all the angles on yet.
And honestly, when I received the question from FinCom, I, from the past actuary at PERAC, he would have said, no way. We're done. We've buckled this up. You had this discussion in the fall. It's a done deal. We've already issued our final actuarial report. So I was completely shocked when Mr. Miller contacted PERAC before contacting the, the retirement board. And he asked them these questions and the actuary got back to me saying that, oh, by the way, FinCom's reaching out. I told them we can do these things. I'm like, oh my God, that's a, that's a shock to me. I didn't realize we could even have this flexibility. So it's really kind of been over the last couple of weeks that this is kind of.
Is there a risk that there might be another personality at PERAC down the road who?
Possibly.
If you say, I don't know, like that's more uncertainty for me and more reason why why I'm, I really don't want to rock the boat.
Yeah.
So I, I think that's kind of where I'm standing right now.
Okay. Anthea?
Yeah, I, I mean, Stacy is our expert in this, as a comptroller, and, and coming from the retirement board. I do feel like, you know, since we're doing this every other year and potentially annually, that it's, you know, having, having an eye towards it next, if this, you know, if the decision is to do it next year, having an eye towards it next year in the future. But I think with the, you know, the, the previous sort of advice that this board gave, and I think in seeing, you know, there's savings for this year, but overall, it's $190,000 across the next four years, that's a gap that needs to be filled. It doesn't make sense to me to make a change for this year and, you know, coming back to it in another year, saying, look, there's a gap. So that, that's where I'm at.
And that gap is a snapshot in time, so I think we all understand that that will change. It's just a matter of today.
That's, yeah, that's what it's sort of estimated to be today, and it could change, but that's why, that's why you're looking at it every two years, or, or every year as we get closer, and that's, that's what that's for.
So I'm a conservative guy, right? I like paying stuff off, just putting it behind us. And, you know, sometimes I think, you know, how many, I, A, I give FinCom an A-plus for digging this up, coming up with this, I think it's, you know, it's really cool. But how many things do we push down the road in order to address a shortfall today? Because it just mounts. And sometimes I have a hard time getting my arms around the size of that. Like, it, so I'm, I'm opposed to it.
Okay. Mike?
Thanks, Michelle, and thanks, Stacy. This is really helpful, as everyone said. It's, you know, I'm a little bit conflicted on it, because I, I like the strategic thinking of the finance committee, especially after we see costs, you know, over 2.5% year after year. And, you know, as you said, we thought in, you know, FY '20, we only had, you know, a couple of years on the override. We stretched it out by being strategic and making tough decisions. I think this is one of the, the tough decisions for us to make. I, you know, I, I could go either way on it, but I guess I would defer to you on it. That always seems to go well for the town when, when we do that.
Hopefully.
We know where to look.
That's too much pressure. I'm just kidding.
So, you know, but, you know, on another day, you know, I, I-
You could be in favor.
And with some more information, as Bill said, you know, it's, it's a little bit of a, of a shakeup too soon. But, I mean, you know, the other issue is, you know, are, are we, you know, are we really, you know, paying this off, or is that, you know, are those goalposts keep moving year after year?
Well, that's what I'm trying to avoid, like, we kick this down one more year, we're going to do it again the next, like, I, I mean, I know it's a tough, it's a big number, well, not anymore, it's 14 million, which is not that big anymore, in my opinion. Then we've got this OPEB looming, so it's like, let's get this paid off, and let's move on to the next thing.
Yeah, I, I may be more inclined to, you know, you know, for us to have a policy to, you know, prioritize reversions, to, you know, pay this off, because, you know, we have seen healthy reversions in, you know, the past, you know, few years. And, and, you know, that's general revenue from, from taxpayers, and, you know, we reappropriate to other things, but this would seem like a priority for me, and I, but I do think in the future, we should, we should look at kind of leveling out some of these payments. So again, I, I would probably not be inclined to, to support the proposal and maintain what we, the work we've done in the fall.
Okay.
Stacy, did we, just brought up, did we recently sort of revise a OPEB policy or some, something similar?
Yes, in the fall, I think right around this time, the board did approve a policy to, to start funding OPEB once we paid off pension. So pension isn't going to go away completely. We still have normal costs, and based on the market, we're always going to have some unfunded piece, most likely. It won't be, you know, $4 million, it might be $2 million. But the idea was to look at both of these combined, focus on pension first, because that's required. I'm not sure when the state is going to make us pay the OPEB act, required contribution, hopefully never. But this right now, it's sort of a grouped liability once we pay it off.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. Well, so four to one.
Yeah, I appreciate the, having time. I know you wanted a kind of a brief meeting tonight, and I bombed it, but I think the timing is tight, so I appreciate it.
No, pensions are simple.
Thanks for being here.
If you have any questions, let me know. Thank you all.
Okay. Next up is the planning board, MBTA 3A funding. Mr. Herman, Mr. Jarius.
Good evening.
Out in TV land, I'm Diab Jarius, Chair of the Planning Board.
Taylor Herman, Town Planner.
So we've printed out a couple of salient pages from the, the bylaw, in case you were to where it has changed.
I'd appreciate it, since I forgot my laptop, so that'd be great.
I'll have the entire one. People out in the audience, if they want some.
Thank you.
Mike, you good?
Okay. Both are different going around, so.
Oh, are there just two sheets?
Yeah, two sheets.
Yeah. One table and one map.
Map, got it.
I guess that's map plus table.
Something.
So, a really brief background on MBTA 3A. 2021, okay, a couple of years ago, before we changed governors, there was a law passed which requires communities which have some type of service from the MBTA to create new zoning, or to, to create, to allow for the, for the use of multifamily residences by right in certain areas within town, in particular, within a half mile of the MBTA station. At least half of the units have to be zoned for being built there, and at least half of the area. So you get a minimum area and a minimum number of units which are required by the state. Winchester is categorized as a commuter rail community. We do have two commuter rail stations. We were essentially told we should choose one to make it easier, and also to avoid the state coming back and asking us questions about why we don't have more units. So we chose to use the Wedgmere, no, I'm sorry, we chose not to use the-
See, we're at Lakeside, Sims Corner, like, yeah, what happened?
I, I'm recovering from a headache, so sometimes the neurons fire, but not really on purpose. So we, we chose the town center station, in part because we already had some zoning changes back about 10 years ago, which increased the density of allowable units in the downtown to the point where we could actually meet the requirements of the state by simply reusing our existing density. The big change, of course, is that our, our center business district is not zoned for multifamily by right, it's zoned for commercial, and then you need special permits to go beyond that. The whole point of the state's legislation is to remove barriers to development of residential structures, and special permits are, can be a very large hindrance to moving forward on these projects. So we've spent the last, and Taylor, please chime in if I'm saying anything incorrectly. We spent the last couple of years going through a couple of mapping processes to understand which areas we could use as our overlay districts. We came, we worked with consultants which were provided by the state, who worked with us right after Brian Zickelli left. He had already provided an initial set of maps or plans. We worked with some consultants, JM Goldson, LLC, and they, and we decided that we had to start revising the original maps that Brian had set up. In part because one of the, one of the characteristics of this new legislation is that you needed to, the entire building had to be multifamily by right. And when we looked at the downtown area, we want, when we looked at all the commercial corridors, we wanted to make sure that those commercial corridors remained commercial. So you can do that in one of two ways. You can incentivize commercial, or you can just simply remove those buildings from your overlay district. Because we had enough capacity, we took the easy way out, we removed those areas from the overlay district. We also removed a number of the historical lots. There was quite a bit of concern from the historical preservation community in town as to how the historical buildings would fare under this legislation. Then, and, and I don't know if you all recall, we went before town meeting, I think, every, every year, twice a year, telling you this was coming, it's finally coming. We formed a zoning review advisory committee last fall, and this is a group of town residents, as well as reps from the, no, from the design review and historical. And they went to town. I mean, they are, they were, I think, the most dedicated set of residents on a voluntary committee I'd ever seen. They scheduled-
Hold on there, we, we might take exemption on that.
Did you schedule a meeting every week without anyone asking you to through the month of December?
Yeah. Diab, I'll defend you on this one. They've done some good work, and a lot of-
They are insanely hardworking. So they came in and they took a look at our maps, and they took a look at a lot of concerns that had been expressed. Were these the right areas? What is the impact on what's going to happen to the downtown area? Or I should say, the town center. Is this in line with what the original rezoning of the town center was supposed to do? They looked at a number of other areas around town. They looked at, for instance, a neighborhood near Glen Road, they looked at the Mahoney Lot, they looked at, you know, they just looked everywhere. And after a lot of really deep discussions, they made a suggestion to the planning board about how to move a good chunk of the overlay district out of the center business district. And so we did that. And so the map you see in front of you is different from the one I've shown to town meeting, because the ZRAC came to being essentially right before last fall's town meeting, and this was a product of their, their work. So what's still the case is that we are still, I think, again, correct me if I'm wrong, we are pretty much mostly dealing with the existing density. And so I'm careful to say existing density rather than existing zoning, because we have two parcels in there, which are in the Parkview parcel, and also there are a couple of housing developments on Lake Street over by north, north of Wedge Pond. And those are, all three of those were put in by special permit. And so if you look at their existing density and open area, you have to look at what's there now. And so we've used that and as an indication of that, that those areas are probably not going to get less dense over time. Realistically, Parkview will never get redone, it's, they're condos. But the state does allow us to assemble areas in order to meet our goals. And the one goal we had at trouble meeting was always the amount of area. It was never the units, it was never the density, it was merely area. So we could take Parkview, which is eight acres, and we could use that. And the north and south, not north and south Wedge Ponds, the north of Wedge Pond areas could be connected, and we could get the area there. So we are still looking at existing densities. The GBD II area, south of Clark Street, are we still existing, or did we bump that up a bit?
It's existing.
We are looking at, so that's what, what you see in that, in the table showing you the overlay district, and also the dimensional requirements. Those are the, those are the key numbers that the state is looking at to determine whether we are compliant. The other part of compliance is, is the language in our bylaw, are our development standards, are those commensurate with what they want, which is namely, you can't prevent development from going through. You can, through site plan review, put in reasonable conditions. The state has allowed site plan review for whichever projects you choose, and we've chosen that all projects which come in under this go through a site plan review. And that's pretty much it. Did I say everything?
I believe so.
So disappointments, yes. On my side, I wish we could have done more. I think that we were lucky, and that we do have existing high density in the town center, which we can use, and also in GBD III, or II, rather. Could we have gone more? I think there's a, there's a, there's a political line you have to walk, in terms of what people feel comfortable with doing. So I know that there are housing people who wish we'd pushed it. I know that there are historical people who wish we'd pushed it the other way. So I don't quite believe that if you piss everyone off, you're doing a good job. I believe it just means you're pissing everyone off. But I think we are at a medium, which we hope is acceptable to the state, and we can come back. The key thing is, we need to get this done by December 31st of this year. If this, if we wait until the fall, and the state decides that part of our thing is non-compliant, there's a separability clause, but if they decide one of our important things is non-compliant, then we don't have a lot of time, because there's a 90-day window of review. And so we would end up in 2025, which is past our deadline of '24. So we know there's at least one area where we are looking at it, and that is the inclusionary housing component. The state allows you to put in 10% of units at an affordability rate of 80%. As long as it's 10% of the total units, you can put that in. And so that would get us essentially, it wouldn't change our SHI at all, it would just keep us level. We currently have a higher inclusionary zoning requirement in the CBD, GB II, and GB III, which is that if you're above 25 units, you have to put in an extra 5% at 120% AMI, which is your workforce housing. The state really didn't want people to use inclusionary housing as a means of avoiding building housing. So they said, if you want more than 10%, you have to come back and prove to us that it's economically feasible for development. So the state was, they gave us some consultants on their dime, and they have done an analysis. Unfortunately, the way that we count affordable housing units, and the way the state does, is slightly different. And so we are going back to getting, we are continuing our economic feasibility analysis to make sure that we can do what we can in our existing inclusionary zoning, or we're going to do as close as possible. And that's, that's the one loose hanging thing, I think, that. But I don't think that's a concern. I think that we can do that, and we can get that in at another town meeting. And now I will shut up.
Okay.
So Diab, would, are the abutters to this overlay district, the density of the housing to, to their homes and businesses is really no higher now, higher under this plan than it is existing?
No, it uses the same, same exact setbacks that we have currently.
Yeah.
And heights.
And heights.
And didn't you even go so far as to tailor it, not just by the four mods we see on the map, but into sub-mods as well, as you work up Main Street?
Well, those are for the next, that's for our North Main Street initiative, which is where we were going to look, redoing the underlying zoning. And so that complexity comes in, hopefully in the fall, when we get back to doing North Main Street. But yeah. And that was, that was another suggestion from, from the ZRAC.
Thanks for doing this, by the way.
You're welcome. We kind of have no choice.
No, it's double, someone had to do it.
I got a, I have a couple of questions. Do you have more, Tom?
No, also, thank you.
And I want to say, I want to get this passed. So anything I can do to help, please let me know. The area for this had to extend, is it a half-mile from the train station?
Half of the area and half of the units must be within a half-mile.
Okay. So does that half-mile mark fall somewhere along the Clark Street area?
Yes, it does.
And we've extended it up to Swanton, right?
We have, yeah.
Okay. So I guess my first question is, why did we do that? And my second question is, how much does it matter? Because on the map of historical properties, it seemed like that stretches mostly historical properties.
So the reason why we did that is because we needed, back when I told you we only needed area and not units. That was true pretty much up until the ZRAC came and looked at what we'd done and made these suggestions. And at that point, we had to, we are now, we'd like to have, the state is, I don't know if the state is recommending, but certainly their consultants are representing a 10% buffer. And Taylor, can you tell us where we're at? Because I don't have that number. Is it on there?
We're required to zone for 1,220 units, and we have zoned for 1,420.
So it's a, it's a little over 10%, but, so the reason we, we've moved more, we were always going to go up GBD II at some point, but we've had to rely upon it more, because we've moved stuff out of the CBD. The question about the historical buildings on North Main Street is a good question. We have not gotten as much concern expressed to us about those structures. I think that the town center, the vision of the town center, this model people have in their head of what it looks like and represents, does not extend up North Main Street. And so I think people are more willing to consider, you know, some of the lots where there are historical structures on there are really hard to build. They are like these, like, if you know those tiny little houses that back up, there is, I have no idea what you could build there. It's just so tiny. Some of the historical structures, you know, they abut part of Horn, Hanbrook Parkway, so you're dealing with, you know, con con issues, and you're dealing with, you know, so there are, there's, it's not, the east side of North Main is much easier to develop in some places than the west side. The west side is, the lots are not deep, and so it requires a little more thought. So I don't know if I answered your question, or if I successfully sidestepped it.
Neither, I think, but, I mean, just to help you, look- But, I mean, just to help you, look, in this map that you've provided, it just looks like it's nothing but red properties, save for one on the west side of North Main Street there.
So I'll, I'll say two things about the, about the historical properties that are included. The first is the historical, having a, having a historical parcel just me, just adds an additional step in the review process.
Okay.
It doesn't make it impossible to develop. It just means that the, the historical commission becomes an essential part of the review process. They can then enforce demolition delay. They can enforce, you know, maybe other, you know, specific rules based off of their, their opinions. But from their perspective of complying to the state law, a parcel being historic or not really doesn't actually matter. Now with, like Dia was saying, with the Z-Rack and many other members of the community, it was very clear that the preservation of historical structures downtown was far more significant than the pres, than the preservation of historical structures up Main Street. And we, together, this, this map was, you know, agreed upon as the best option.
Okay. That, that was a wonderful answer to my question, and then some. And Taylor's into the next question, too. No pun intended. As you both know, I was on the zoning board before I was on the select board, and it jumped out to me that in the proposed bylaw, the site plan review is going to be done by the planning board, and that is a function that is often done by the zoning board instead. So I'm curious what the thought process was as to why have the planning board doing that if it's a function more commonly done by the zoning board? I can make some guesses, but I'd rather hear from you.
We originally thought it would be a good idea to have the zoning board do it. Town Council suggested we do it otherwise. And what he said is that in most communities, site plan review for large construction is done by the planning board and not by the zoning board. And so I think, he made a fairly compelling argument. He convinced three out of the five members of the planning board to reverse their vote because we were all pretty much going for the zoning board.
And in addition, of the three communities who have been approved, and I don't remember the exact number, many others of, that have submitted have all been the planning board. So we were also following the direction of other communities who have been approved.
That's interesting. I mean, it, it seems like it would be a different criteria than the current site plan review that is often done, because it has to be more qualitative and less discretionary?
The site, yeah, I mean, the site, yes.
And so like, I would be a little worried that you could get a very confused zoning board if they were trying to do different standards on different properties in different places, but...
Well, the problem is, there would already be. Had we given the ZBA, you would then be doing site plan review on the north core of the Center Business District, which is currently the planning board's area. So there was always going to be confusion.
Yeah.
I should say, there was always going to be cross, whatever.
We, we don't need any more of that.
Yeah. So it was, whichever way you went, one party was going to be looking, it's going to be two, one zone would be looked at by two parties. And so, yeah.
Okay. My last question would just be, what can we do to help Town Meeting learn more about this before Town Meeting? I think your articles have been excellent, but I know not everybody reads them.
Well, we are planning on having another public information session for Town Meeting members. I think we discovered tonight that Beth has already reserved that evening, so we're going to find another one. Well, you know, if you write it, whoever writes it down first gets it.
We can just use the same Zoom. We can just, like, transition.
Yeah.
There you go.
I, I think there are, Taylor has spoken to a lot more residents than I because they call them up whenever they want to. So you can speak to this. I think there are some misconceptions that it would be useful to get, to maybe dispel. One of them is that people see this 1,220 units, and they think those are on top of what we already have, when realistically, it's pretty much already in the zoning. It just hasn't been built yet.
Yeah.
There are other communities where that isn't the case, like, for instance, our favorite community to look at these days, which is Milton. Milton is, and, you know, so we don't have to, first off, Milton is very different because they got put into the rapid transit category, which is a much steeper hill to climb. And so we do not have a 1940s trolley coming into our, you know, with four stops like Milton does. So we are definitely commuter rail. And I think people need to recognize that Milton and Winchester are not the same. We are different. We can easily accomplish this goal. We are not adding 1,220 new units. We are reusing the existing density. Whether those units get built or not, the market will tell. But the market has already said something about Winchester and new units in the downtown, saying, we're just not going to put them there. We've had so few. So I think those are the things that I think drive a lot of fear into peoples. They think we're going to end up with a totally different look to town, and I don't see that as happening. And Taylor, you speak, you've spoken to more than I have, so...
Yeah, I agree with that, but the, I think the biggest thing that any, you or anyone else can do to help is to broaden our reach for education, or reach of education. You know, I, we're, we're trying to produce as much education material as we possibly can in different modes, in different formats, different visualizations, and we're, we're going to continue to do that. That's the thing that the planning department's doing, you know, every other day. So continuing to distribute that to friends or other people, regardless of how well you think they know it or not, I think that that is the biggest thing that, that, that helps.
Can I ask, this is really helpful, this chart, and reading it and seeing, you know, very clearly where we're at and how we're meeting these totals. How many units are approximately in this area right now, do we know?
You mean constructed units?
Yeah.
I have no idea. I, I know how many units we could build, but how many are actually built, I could not tell you. We are zoned for, you know, we have a lot of one- or two-story buildings downtown. A number of them could rise up a story just right now because they previously had three stories and one burnt. We've got, you know, single-story buildings like the CVS building, which could easily take two or three stories according to the current zoning, so...
I, I would, it's a good question. It's one that we're probably, I'm surprised no one else has asked yet.
No.
And it's one that we're going to have to know the answer to. So I can get back to you on the exact numbers, and I can get back to anyone else on the exact numbers, but I would estimate between 450 and 550. And that's mostly because Parkview is 318.
Okay. And that's helpful, too, because I know that this is, this is like, not theoretical, but like, potential to zone and not required to zone. So, you know, understanding to, like, it's not that we have, if we were to do this at Wedgmere, right, and it's, we have 10 houses, and now we've got a zone for 1,200 is very different than, you know, what's, what's already there is approximately...
We would have needed security, I think, at our meetings if we...
Yeah. To be clear, we're not doing this at Wedgmere.
But it's April Fool's, so, you know, probably like that way. But thank you, this is really helpful to get the snapshot and background and, as Bill said, however we can.
No questions, John? Mike?
No, just thank you. I know this has been a long process and kind of entered into the planning board's work when you're doing North Main Street and doing a lot of other things. So certainly, we need to get this done. It's our obligation, and so I hope Town Meeting supports it. I will support it. Again, I, you know, have some concerns. It's a little bit of a missed opportunity for us on the affordable housing side and building so much-needed units in the town center to support our businesses and to be near transit. But, you know, it's, it's possible that there will be some housing that develops over a period of time as a result of this. So I think we have a deadline by the end of the year, and, you know, we need, we need to move this to get it done. And, and you need to get back to the North Main Street work and some of the other work of the planning board. So I appreciate it. So that's the only comments I have.
Okay. So I've got a couple of questions, but thanks, everybody. So Taylor, to your, you know, and to Bill's question, how do we let Town Meeting know? There's, I spend a lot of time on the website. There's a ton, a wealth of information, you know, the Goldston memo from June, FAQs, maps. It really is, it's, it's easy to navigate. It's easy to find. I thought it was great. So thank you. And we get your newsletters. So I wanted maybe one question on Town Meeting, and Mike just reminded me. In the presentation that we saw, there's our subsidized housing inventory map included, but we know that this is not an affordable housing initiative. So I wonder if that doesn't somewhat confuse the, the topic?
I am not familiar with what you have in front of you. Where is, where does that come?
With subsidized housing inventory at the top. So...
Part of your package.
Okay. Ah, so maybe it's a bad page break, but it looks...
Yes, that is just, that is, that is, that's absolutely an unfortunate page break.
Okay. Because it's, it rather conflates a topic that we're very, being very careful to not conflate.
Yeah.
So I don't know if we can re-paginate it?
What you're seeing is just our, since the overlay is a part of the zoning map, we had to update the zoning map, you know, just like the one we see on the, on the board here, to have the overlay in it. It has nothing to do with subsidized housing inventory.
Okay. So if that comes up, there you go, you have an answer.
Yep.
I think we can fix that before we go.
Probably.
Yeah, I'll talk, I'll talk to Jen. Should I talk to Jen?
Let's see. It's just the definition. It's only the definition.
And it's right at the top of a map, so there you go.
Right, yeah, yeah. It's at the, and maybe we should just move it up in the list of definitions, and then it won't be...
So then the other question I have is about residential, commercial. So the only, right around the Rotary, Goldston talked about Center Business District, some, Center Business District being exempted, so some exempt lots. But in theory, from the Rotary North, so from Bruegers up to Swanton Street, should this pass, and I agree, we need to do this, any building could go from being commercial to residential by right.
Yes.
Any building between the Rotary, so our entire business district could become a residential district by right.
Yes, but, this is your...
Yes, but...
I don't want to put Taylor's, words in Taylor's mouth, but Taylor constantly reminds us that in many ways, the underlying zoning is actually more attractive.
So explain, actually, because that was another question I had, explain how the underlying zoning of the Center Business District, how this, because this says it overlays, right? This, this is over what underlying zoning is, and underlying zoning is about commercial properties from the Rotary to Swanton Street. So how do these two zoning districts interplay?
So any developer who comes in essentially gets to choose which, which zoning that they want to build in. Do they want to build in the existing underlying zoning, or do they want to build with, with the MBTA overlay, overlay district? So you can choose whichever one. We aren't, we aren't, the underlying zoning isn't going away. And a lot of the zoning along the district, especially in North Main, so you have from the Rotary up to Stop and Shop, that is still, that's the, the underlying zoning of the north core of the CBD still exists. And if you compare those two, the, the development standards of those two, the development opportunity of the CBD is much greater than it is with by-right housing, multifamily housing.
In what ways? By size, no parking, what, how is it greater? What makes it?
Yep, mostly by, by, by size and height. So you can go higher, you can go wider, or you can fill out a lot more with higher FAR. So when, when you're, when you're designing a building, the underlying zoning from a dimensional standpoint is actually, in most cases, going to be more economically feasible than developing just a by-right residential housing structure.
And if I could add something, because I realized I said something earlier, which probably wasn't clear, is that there are incentives built into the Center Business zoning to say, okay, if you do this, we'll give you a bump in height, or we'll, you know, if you put your cars underneath your building, you get an extra X feet. If you do something else with respect to housing, you get some more feet. So those are built into the underlying zoning, but those didn't come across into the multifamily districts, the MBTA districts. So the MBTA districts, you are capped at a height. It doesn't matter what you do, you can't get more. But if you go into the underlying zoning, as Taylor said, you have flexibility. So when I said earlier, we're using the underlying dimensions and densities, we're really using that sort of minimum that you can get, but we're not, you don't, but you can do more in the underlying because you can get these bonuses.
But should we pass this by right, we could ignore underlying zoning, and Center Business District could become Center Residential District by right?
The, the north core of that, so, so when you say Center Business District, let's be careful.
Okay, so Rotary North then?
Rotary North. The Rotary North...
So what's left in the center core then? Everything around the Common and then up Mount Vernon?
You've got, you've got the museum district, you've got the East Court, you've got everything except for the stuff north, so you've got quite a bit. We do have a little, two buildings in the museum district, which are existing, how tall are they? Four stories already? I can't remember.
Winchester Place, the condos at Winchester Place.
Yeah, those are pretty tall. I don't remember how many stories. So those are in there as well, so we could get some area. So yes, it would be north of, north of the Rotary, you would see, but you've got, like, for instance, Wedge Pond condos aren't going anywhere. So that'll stay there regardless.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
No, I, I get it. I'm just, we're at, you know, 92% of our tax base is residential. We, and people ran for office on, let's protect our commercial base, let's expand our commercial base. Main Street is our commercial base. And I appreciate that Church Street and Main Street, heading away from the Rotary, and Mount Vernon Street, which, you know, isn't commercial for terribly long before the fire department and this building takes over, this seems to put at risk maintaining our commercial base. I understand it could be hypothetical, I understand it could be, it's not likely, but it seems to put at risk the heart of our commercial district.
So I think that the heart of our commercial district is not, because the heart of our commercial district is south of the Rotary, I think. I mean, what you have above there is you've got a bank, you've got, I mean, if you look at the number of businesses south of the Rotary, there's a lot more than north of the Rotary.
So there's, there's a bagel place, there's a town pantry, there's a tire store, there's a dry cleaners, there's a Burger King. It's just starting at Skilling's heading north, right?
Wait, wait, yeah, but if you compare the number of businesses in the rest of the downtown and the Center Business Districts, there were like 20 or 30 at least, so, but let me, I just want to, want, because the CBD, the entire CBD is not at play here, it's just the north core. But we are running into an issue in that we need the area. There's a limit to where we can put these districts. So we looked at St. Mary's, because that is within the half-mile, and it, we could have done things, but one of the arguments that Lance Grenzback made, back from his time on the planning board, was that the town has certain levers that you can use to guide development. And so when you look at a spot like St. Mary's, which I don't know what state it's in, I don't know anything about whether it's going to continue, who knows? But it's a plot of land. So the question is, at which point do you have the biggest lever in order to drive that development the way you want? And so that is now zoned as SCI, which stands Conservation Industrial Service, maybe? But you can't put housing on there. So if that lot were ever to come up for sale, they would have to come to the town and say, hey, we want to change our zoning. At that point, the town has leverage, and they can say, okay, why don't you do some things our way? When you look at some of the other zones that we looked at, I mean, the key is, if we don't go to the north core, and we need to get our, our, half of our area within a half-mile, then we are moving down towards Wedgmere. We're moving into a single-family zoned currently. And so there's a trade-off. Is, is the town willing to, to take the area out of the Center Business District and move it closer to the single-family zoned areas? And I don't think this town is ready for that. And that's really, I mean, we have a hard cutoff. We need to have half of the area within a half-mile. And that's just, there's no way around that, that physical reality. But I understand where you're coming from. I just, it's...
So I guess you could probably anticipate questions along those lines, right?
Yes.
And I, and I live near Wedgmere, and so does Bill, and we're not saying just put it down by my street, but I think residential and residential, and commercial and commercial, we, we can't afford to lose commercial. we can't afford to lose commercial, as far as I can tell. So maybe it is about attractiveness of underlying, maybe it's site plan review with reasonable conditions, but it seems like the St. Mary's example of if someone wanted to develop there and they changed zoning, the town has leverage. If we pass this as is, the town doesn't have leverage, it's by right. So that's a tough trade-off. But I appreciate all of it, and well done.
It's something that the Z-Rack tossed, well not tossed, they thought about it a lot.
Well, I'm sure.
I mean, that's why we looked at the Mahone's Land, the Benel Land, all of these large lots that we could use outside, Gin Road, which already, you know, so they looked at them, and they're just, yeah, our list is limited.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Taylor.
Thank you.
Yep.
So I'd like to just pause, well, I'm going to just put Capital Study Committee at the end, but I'd like to move to Spring Town Meeting warrant, because I want to just talk about Lynch Traffic. And then we'll do Spring Town Meeting Select Board Article Assignments, and then we'll wrap up with the update from Stabilization Fund Study Committee, if that's okay. So I'm going to turn it over to Beth.
Sure. So in your packet was the warrant, final warrant, all of the articles have been received. It does include the CPA bylaw. In your packet was a redlined version. So we did make some changes after the board's meeting last week. Mike, Anthea, myself, and Town Council Jay Talaman worked out a few changes. I don't know if there's any interest in going through any of those changes, or...
I don't want to go through the changes. One thing I heard, I think, last week, which I don't know that we need to reflect it in the bylaw, and maybe I can wait for Mike, I think we heard this when it was Jim and Roger here last week, around staggering terms. So, and I know on the Board of the Farm, we did, we staggered terms, and I didn't, I saw three years, but I didn't see staggered starts or ends. Is it in there? And I just missed it?
No, it's not in there. So we discussed it with council of whether for the two citizen member at large positions that we stagger those terms. And the thinking was, in the design of all of the other members on this board, who are on this Winchester Committee for Community Preservation, the WCCP...
Yeah, we worked on the acronym for QUADROHADO.
We did. Saw that.
So of the seven other members, they're all appointed by the boards they're on for a term of three years, or really up to three years.
Or less.
Because they may and likely will not all consistently be on their boards for the same period of time, especially because about half, a handful of them are elected boards, and the others are appointed. So that was kind of the consideration, not to add any specific sort of staggering there, was that there would be a natural...
A natural stagger, right. And we did add a provision that any member who served consecutively for two full terms on the CPA committee shall not be reappointed after, until a lapse of at least one year. So if somebody serves for six years, they need to get off for a year, and they can come back.
Okay. That was my only comment on that.
So in cases where the language directs, for example, in the case of the select board member, what happens if that select board member is for nine years, and they're the representative to the Housing Partnership, whatever? How does that work?
Right. So it says, a WCCP member who has served consecutively for two full terms shall not be reappointed until laps of at least one year, provided that this requirement may be waived or no other candidate is available. So if there's a select member who served for six years on this committee...
They'd have to take a year off.
They'd have to take a year off.
But that presumes then you have someone else on the select board, because this person has to be, who's also the board's representative to either the Housing Partnership or the Affordable Housing Trust.
Right.
So if that person...
Means you got to change.
Well, that's all, okay, that's...
Right. I mean, or the board, I mean, you know, you have some ability under this to be flexible, but the idea is that you get kind of a change.
It encourages new blood.
Yeah.
So you don't have just the same people with the same thought process all the time, and that's a good idea.
Yep.
Yeah, and, you know, this was my idea, using myself as an example, you know, I've been on the Housing Partnership Board for, you know, since 2015, and, you know, I think, you know, it's always good to bring in some new ideas, as Bill was saying, and also just give people an opportunity to see that there are these opportunities out there to, you know, because if they say, oh, well, Mike's been there forever, he's, you know, going to, he's going to stay, and he knows what he's doing, well, maybe not. You know, sometimes you get entrenched in a committee, or you don't have new ideas, and so I think for this committee in particular, it's really important.
I agree.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I don't know if there's anything else you want me particularly to go over in terms of the warrant. There's 37 articles, so it's not going to be a short town meeting.
We are going to get through two nights, though, right? At the end of April, April, no, no, no. The last week of April, we are meeting Monday and Thursday. Very often, we don't get that Thursday after that first night, and we have plenty of non-financial to get through, so...
Like the 3A zoning?
Yeah, so the first 10 pages is dedicated to 3A zoning.
There's a lot.
But the CPA will come up?
CPA, so 3A zoning is Article 4...
Yeah, we'd have to.
We'd have to wait till May.
What's that?
We have to wait to handle the CPA.
Till May for CPA?
No. That's only for financial articles related to the following fiscal year.
Okay.
So CPA can be done...
So in theory, you could be in the first couple nights.
On May 2nd, if we get there.
May 2nd, you said?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, that's Thursday, right?
Yes, it is. Yes.
Um...
We voted all of our motions, right?
We did.
So we don't, do we need to vote anything tonight on the warrant for select board?
We need to vote to issue the warrant.
The warrant, yes.
So that we can send it to the printer tomorrow, and so that can get out to residents.
With fixing that page break, maybe with...
We will fix the page break, certainly.
The map?
Yep.
Okay.
Beth, can I ask, on Article 5 for Permanent Shade Tree Committee?
Yes.
Is that definition of permanent street committee?
Is that what?
So to see if the town will vote to amend the definition of permanent street committee as contained in Section 3 of Chapter 18, should that be permanent shade tree?
Or is it street trees? Used to be street trees.
That's a good catch. Let me check on that. I think it, I think it should be permanent street tree committee. I will confirm. Thank you.
So any other changes to the warrant? Eyes catch. And we're not asking you to change the CPA membership by promise and term. If you find that you just need to just sort of bake an attrition, I guess you can amend it over time, right? Okay. So I think we're going to take a motion then, to approve the warrant?
Motion that we approve the Spring Town, I mean, motion that we approve the Spring Town Meeting warrant substantially in the form as presented.
Second.
And within, so now that we've presented it, because it is presented as it is, I want to come back around to, so Lynch Traffic is an article that we're sponsoring. There's, I just want to understand, Beth, between now and town meeting, because the warrant article is to proceed with Lynch Traffic to our resident and neighbor concerns. And I know that Tool came before us, I made a comment about speed tables on Canal Street, you know, should there be four, should there be three, should there be five or four in Middlesex? What is the process? Because I know we all love doing traffic design at town meeting, it's one of our favorite things to do as a body, but what is the process for input to Tool? So the motion at town meeting is to fund improvements, right? And there's, I imagine, a design that will be approved, but when does that window close? Or what opportunity for additional neighbor input is there between now and town meeting, or between now and that actual work being, you know, underway?
Yeah, so I think the window is very close to closing at this point. There has been, I appreciate the comments we received from the neighbors, there have been several public meetings dating back to when we got the original funds for kind of the preliminary study, where we did invite large sections of the neighborhood to provide some input. I would be happy to invite Tool back in, maybe one of the board's next meeting, so you could hear, they did evaluate, you know, some options on Pond Street, it's a very challenging area, right? There's no easy solution. They did look at the truck exclusion signage. This board in past years has evaluated and voted against adding that truck exclusion signage backup, so it's certainly something that we all could hear again in terms of why the decision was made over the past few years to keep it as it is. But I'm happy to have Tool come back in to provide kind of an update on what they looked at on Pond Street, what the constraints are, and what the possible solutions may be going forward, if there's any flexibility. And they are really, have really tried to narrow that design to finalize it. That's how we came up with the cost estimate, right?
Yep, understood.
Is that we kind of build the cost estimate around the final project. But if there are, you know, some things that the board would like to discuss or hear from Tool in terms of what could possibly done, I think we could do that.
But Beth, for the folks here tonight, weren't there some constraints, whether it was with Woburn, on what we could do on Pond Street, and then if we were to implement some of those, it would drive the traffic down Main Street?
So that was part of the truck exclusion piece?
Yes.
Was being kind of a inner community roadway, and with the, if the trucks were excluded off Pond Street, where does that go, right? Where does that traffic flow? And I know that's just one piece of it, right? There's obviously the traffic...
So we did look at some of those things.
Calming piece. But again, Tool has, did evaluate and did look at that during the process.
Truck exclusions are a state, as a state regulation, so only MassDOT can get a truck exclusion. Towns cannot. So there's a criteria for it. There was never a legal truck exclusion on Pond Street. So the sign down in Woburn was just placed there without a legal truck exclusion. So they must have taken it down during construction.
And Tool did some kind of research into that?
Yeah. MassDOT has a website where you can check all the truck exclusions in the state.
So in...
Excuse me.
Let Anthony speak, and then maybe we'll let you guys chime in. Hang on.
So in terms of, Eversource was here last week, right?
Yeah.
And so it sounds likely that from the Woburn substation up to Cambridge Street is going to be dug up a year after Lynch opens, just about, right? And so my, my concern with us asking Tool to change their design is that those are going to be in for about a year, and then going to come up and need to determine how that's put back. And so I wonder if there's an opportunity to look at, you know, here's our starting design, and here are the recommendations that we would make for when the street is put back together after the sort of three, what is it, the existing of the, replacement of the existing 345 line?
Yeah.
But I also wonder if that can be an opportunity for us to look at, since the whole street's coming up, what are bigger things that can be done along that corridor, especially considering sidewalks and how everything is laid out there?
Yeah, certainly, that's, you know, I don't know that we have a dedicated kind of pool of design money for that, but it's certainly something that Tool did evaluate on a conceptual level, as they did the Lynch Traffic study. I don't think that unfortunately there's the ability to expand to install sidewalks on both sides of the street, just because the right-of-way is very narrow. But there are, certainly, the Eversource construction gives us an opportunity to maybe, you know, tack on some improvements as part of that project long-term, obviously.
Would it give us an opportunity to get Eversource to pay for some of that?
We can certainly try.
I think it's a good idea, if, you know, to Anthea's point, if like, if Plan B was discarded for some reason, but we still have the, we still have Plan B as it was drawn up and it's not included, we may not need to redesign, right? We could at least dust that off, I think it's a great idea. I think the neighbors were going to say something, so I wanted to maybe let you speak.
If you have to hear of that.
You can do it from there, I think, is fine.
So I could...
Oh, but both of you come together then? Come on up.
Beth, can Laura, Shipman, Ernest, and all just just like, do you hear? All right.
I just had one thing I wanted to clarify, because specifically at the last Tool meeting, when we asked about sidewalks, or speed humps, or anything like that, they said the intersections of Pond Street were in the scope of the project, but Pond Street itself was not in the scope of their project, so they did not review all the things that could be done.
That sounds, that sounds right.
Yeah, I'd have to go back, and I mean, this is, this study's been kind of evolving over the past few years. They may have initially done some traffic counts and that type of thing, gotten some preliminary information, so I don't want to speak completely that we didn't evaluate kind of the speeds or the volumes on Pond Street, but the focus was really, like you said, the walking and the kind of closer to the school in terms of pedestrian and traffic calming around the Lynch School. And Pond Street, for a variety of reasons, is a little, is a bit more of a challenging environment. So again, I, Tool is really the one to be, to be speaking about what they did and what they evaluated, and what was kind of, at one point, you know, in some of these side intersections that came in at Chesterford and...
Norfolk, maybe?
Woodside, and we had, some of their original concept plans showed bumpouts into Pond Street. We did evaluate those with T-TAC several years ago, and there was some concerns that were expressed about bike traffic being impeded by those bumpouts. So there's been a variety of things kind of tossed around over the past few years, which has kind of narrowed to the design that they have on the table right now.
Okay.
So I just wanted to say, you know, from my point of view, yes, we'd like the truck restriction, but it's really not about whether we can have a truck restriction or not, it's an absolute safety issue. We have a car during the study period that was going over 70 miles an hour, you know, 250 cars were going over 40 miles an hour, so there's a 73% chance of a fatality or significant injury if you hit a 15-year-old or older. But we're talking about children, and we're talking about 18-wheeler trucks, you know, and there's no sidewalk on the north side of the street, so we can't get across from one side to the other side. So it's, the speed is just insane. When we did the override, there was a lot of, you know, the slide deck on Article 14 talked about doing, you know, the Lynch neighborhood, the neighborhoods around Lynch. Pond Street directly abuts the Lynch property, it has 75% of the traffic, by far the highest, you know, volume, it has the highest speeds, it's an unsafe road that abuts Lynch. And so for it to be, I think the expectation, certainly in the Pond Street community, but I think broader, is that we were going to be looking at the Lynch neighborhoods with this project. And so it kind of feels like a little bit of a bait and switch on the override, if it's not being used for Pond Street. The community input, you know, we have participated, the community actively in every one of these meetings. Now, I wasn't at the most recent one, neither were some of us, but others were, because it conflicted with the Lynch Parent Association meeting. But, you know, I don't know how we could be more engaged in the process and expressing the concerns than we have been, and they just feel like they're not, they're falling on deaf ears a little bit. There's also, there are things that could be done, you know, speed bumps could be done, or humps, like they were in Medford, and the only reason given for not doing that, that I've heard, is outside of engineering standards, but they did it there, or maybe it's not.
I said noise, sorry.
And neighbors, you know, maybe don't like the noise, but no one's talked to us about whether we would trade safety for some noise in some places.
So, I'm curious, Beth, if we can have Tool come back to us, though I think we have questions, speed bumps, I think, would be one, could Tool meet with the community one more time? Could we ask that?
Yeah, I think I would first have them come back to the board, so you could understand what they evaluated, and then we can kind of figure out how we want to go from there.
Okay.
Whether it's Tool or not, you know, like, we just need to, as a community, figure out how to make it safer.
So...
Yeah, and I think the one, just to reiterate, I think the speed is really, is really concerning, and I think the way that the road is configured right now, what we've seen in accidents, or even not near misses, because of the speed, vehicles are actually moving out of their designated lanes into the oncoming traffic in some situations. So that's a serious concern for children walking to school. I mean, we have, just on the corridor between, you know, this is before Chesterford, not even close, maybe a half a mile, seven families who are going to be sending their children to Lynch once it's completed. Seven families, probably eight or nine children there. That's not insignificant, and, I mean, I think these children, or the parents, would like to send their children to school safely and assume that nothing's going to happen on the way. So I think the speed, and again, the trucks are just, the way the road is configured is too, it's maybe by design not too narrow, just the site restrictions make it really difficult for these large trucks to make the turns or travel. or travel within their lane and stay there safely. So I think, and I think Tom just mentioned the speed bumps. We had raised the question about Medford on Route 38, which is arguably a much more heavily-traveled roadway than Pond Street. And I think initially the feedback we had gotten was that Route 38 was an emergency route. I forget the exact wording, but basically that that was, because Pond Street is in an emergency corridor, that there was likely, that that was the reason why there couldn't be any speed bumps. Of course, Route 38 is much more heavily trafficked, is being used by emergency vehicles just as well. So the argument doesn't seem to be consistent. And again, the noise argument, which is, I'm happy to trade.
So I don't want to speak for Tool on the speed humps, but they, you know, they offer their professional opinion as a traffic engineer on what meets with traffic standards, right? I think in Medford, my understanding is that, you know, Medford made some decisions that were maybe outside of what kind of the norm was. Now, this board can also make those decisions, but I think from Tool's perspective, they're making the recommendation in terms of what is consistent with their professional opinion in terms of what's safe within kind of traffic calming standards. So again, there's always room for possible solutions that, you know, aren't...
So let's, yep, last thing. Go ahead.
My only concern was we seemed to get three different answers. We seemed to get Medford went outside the standard, and then when we pressed them on that, they said that it would be an issue for trucks. And then we get another answer that it would be an issue for noise.
I think those, all three are probably part of what played into their recommendation. But again, I don't want to speak for Tool.
I have a conservation land across my house that no one can build on. They can put it in front of my house if they want, and I won't complain about the noise.
So we will invite them back to one of our future meetings before town meeting. So probably the 22nd, that's probably what's left if they're free. If not, maybe on the 29th before town meeting. We will not take up Lynch traffic on the first night of town meeting. So we certainly will invite them back, and then we'll let you know when we can have them reach out to you. And we'll make sure you know when they're coming to our meeting.
We appreciate it. We definitely want to work with the select board in town. And again, it's not about speed bumps or signs or anything. It's about just getting the cars to go slower. And so as Anthea mentioned, if they're ripping up the whole road, maybe there could be a redesign then, but, you know, we just have to slow down the traffic. I mean, I know it's a problem all over town, but it is really bad on Pond Street.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thanks for being here tonight.
Appreciate it so much.
Thank you.
Okay, so having voted the warrant, now we need to do spring town meeting article assignments for our select board, so...
Do we need to vote, the board?
Yeah, we do.
We just, I thought we did.
I think you did, John.
No, you made a motion, but...
We didn't vote it. Sorry. Make the motion again, could you?
Yes, I make a motion that we approve the spring town meeting warrant substantially in the form as presented.
Second.
Now, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks for that catch. I thought we had. Okay. So we have about nine articles, a couple on the consent agenda. So first, report from the select board. I will do water and sewer rates.
I'll do it.
I was like, would you like to do it again? Thank you.
Might not go as, go as smoothly as last time, but...
Lynch School traffic calming. Who'd like to do that one?
Tool, Tool will be there, so you will not be on your own.
I'll do what you guys tell me to do. This is where you earn my trust for the next year. And I would prefer, if I, if I'm going to do one the first or second night, we probably...
I, I think we probably would not give, I mean, if you're willing to take it, but I think that's kind of like, as the new guy, that would be, that would be a lot.
I'll do that one in the high school gym floor.
Okay.
And we're going to take a field trip to the gym, right?
So that, the question was on the gym floor. It's co-sponsored with the EFBC. And I know, obviously, Chris Nixon has played a big role in that, so I don't know, John, if you want to talk to Chris. Maybe you could do a dual presentation or something, yeah.
Okay, so we'll come back to Lynch. Maybe it's John, maybe John will trade. But CPA main article and CPA bylaw, do you want to each one take one?
We'll both, probably do both.
Yeah, I think we'll both do both, or we'll...
You'll stand up, stand down?
Other, other guests, yeah.
Okay.
Surprise guests.
Morocco culvert permanent easement. I can take that one. Is that...
Want to give that to Bill? Should that be easy?
I think it should be easy.
You want to do one, Bill?
This famous last word.
I'll, I'll go where I'm needed.
All right, we'll give that to you, Bill, and you can scream later.
What number is that?
That's, oh, I'm not sure.
You know, I didn't, we didn't have article numbers when I put this together, so I apologize.
Comes after the gym floor. Up in the twenties, maybe?
I'll, I'll dig it up and let you know.
Yeah, thanks, Beth.
Might be towards the, towards the beginning.
The strategic maintenance fund?
So I'm happy to, that one is co-sponsored between town manager, capital, and select board. I'm happy to take that if the board is okay with that.
Yep. Okay. So I, maybe I'll take Lynch, John, because I didn't take one, other than report. So why don't I take it? I mean, Anthea has water rates. Thank you again for another year of water. Anthea and Mike have CPA. You have Lynch floor. I'll do traffic. I think that's it. And Bill, you have the easement. All right.
So I'm happy to work with everybody in the lead of the town meeting to get whatever materials you need together for your presentations.
Yes, I'd definitely take Beth up on that offer. I'm going to need it. That's for sure. So the last item of business, we, last week, mentioned, we haven't named this group, but the stabilization funds review, because we have so many capitals and plannings and using the same consonants all the time. We met with finance committee. We, I think John is going to circle back with capital planning with Jimmy and Roger and Mark. But we were, and I talked with Beth as well. So if we're going to develop a committee to really look at the stabilization funds, we didn't get into membership beyond the group that was kind of meeting in the fall around the capital overlay, override. So that was John and myself, someone from FinCom, someone from capital planning. I think we want to have a citizen at large or two. I think the moderator would like to see town meeting with some representation. And we may ask Stacy to weigh in to the extent that we want to look at borrowing and other sort of, you know, funding obligations. But we didn't nail down exactly how many of which type, but that's generally the, the people that were talking about capital in the fall. So the other question that Beth and I discussed was what is the group going to look at? So we kind of came up with three high-level goals of what this committee may do. One was looking at capital funding sources and uses, so the structure of the funds as well as the inflows and outflows of money. You know, we had talked in the fall about retiring debt to capital, or what are some other ways to get money in and how should money flow out? So first is looking at sources and uses. The second goal of this review, if we're reporting back to town meeting, was to educate town meeting on our capital plan and priorities. Just in our conversations, it came up that, you know, capital articles come before town meeting and, and they are, you know, presented and, and supported by capital planning, but it may be that town meeting doesn't necessarily know this is being funded at the expense of something else. What is our plan? What are our priorities? So we're thinking there's an opportunity to educate town meeting. And then within capital needs, you know, which are ongoing maintenance, you know, repairs to things, replacements of, of, you know, structure and infrastructure, extension of life, or the acquisition of new assets. So within those various needs of, you know, not just buying new, but fixing what's broken, extending the life of something, we want to clarify, what is the funding mechanism from approval to funding? So how do we get funding for our repairs? How do we get funding for our extension of life projects? So mapping out what that is for each type of capital need. And do the, and should they follow the same path? So is it, you know, by looking at the funds with building stabilization and capital stabilization, we'll have a sense of what should fund what, and previous town meeting committees also looked at what things would fall in the right buckets. So I think it's an extension of that, but I think there's been some additional, you know, extension of life, like we did with Morocco and other things, in the repair maintenance budget, which we'll take up in town meeting. What should, should that be its own funding source? And if it is, the maintenance repair fund, what kinds of items would go into that? If we want to be, we don't want, we may not want to be that rigid, but what kinds of items would fall into what kinds of funding categories? So that was really the three goals that we thought about. And I know John's going to share some of that with capital planning. I don't think it's, shouldn't be terribly surprising or earth-shattering what we're looking at, but we really did want to bring that town meeting education piece back in to the group. And I'm going to stop, and John was there for the conversation, so please chime in with other things we talked about.
It's just the idea of giving a vision on how we're going to execute the capital plan and how we're going to fund it and, and start talking about it. So a lot of times when we go to a town meeting, it's almost anticlimactic, like the CPA. Talked about it for a year. Now we're going to present it and hopefully the way is paid. We can do, it gives us an opportunity to educate along the, along the way on why we've done certain things. So this report in the fall would, would, you know, essentially be a little bit, here's where we are and here's what we see in the future. And, and then with, and that may be setting the stage if we need to have some kind of override back to the sources and uses. So we're one of the sources. Is that going to be recurring? Is it going to be a one-time type of thing? So forth. Makes sense?
Sounds right. So that's our, that's our report out to this board, because we had promised last week to, hey, what would you guys do? So we just wanted to show that.
So at the last meeting, we kind of talked about like the three different options, right? The existing FinCom article?
Yes.
Doing a motion under that last article, or the board creating a committee outside of town meeting. Did you kind of decide which, which of those options?
Yeah, yes. Our preference is to have the select board form the group and town manager be sort of the head or town, or assistant town manager, but yes. So what finance committee would say about their article was they have an article to report to town meeting about the stabilization funds. And the guidance that I heard, that they received from the moderator, was in order to speak to stabilization funds and the need to review it, they needed to have an article. So they're speaking to that idea under an article because they were, the guidance that I was told, that they were told so. Here we are, third-hand, that they needed to have an article to be given the time to talk about that specific topic. So what I'll go back to the chair and ask if, we, we have seen people speak to articles and then IP the article on the floor, right? Make the presentation, but not move forward with the motion to actually form the committee. I think FinCom is open to that, but we need to close the loop with them. And then I think if we can understand from capital planning that we're not going to form yet a competing committee with capital planning, because capital would, would be part of our study committee. They were all along with looking at a debt exclusion in the fall. So, but thank you, Beth, for that question. We did bring that up. So any other questions, Mike? Bill, you weren't here, but maybe you watched this last week, so Anthea?
No, I'm still catching up after doing other things.
Yeah, so what's the, what's the sort of timeline or approach to that? Would the idea be to start to get it stood up before town meeting?
Yes, absolutely.
John, are you going to be talking to capital about this on Wednesday?
Before tomorrow.
Before tomorrow?
I'll talk tomorrow.
Okay. They have a meeting on Wednesday, though, right?
Yes, they do.
Okay.
Yeah, so Anthea, I think the hope would be, this is the committee, these are the people on the committee, to be able to say that at town meeting, to have had a meeting. I'm actually thinking we might want to actually charter ourselves as a work group with some specific outputs, but the goal would be to not just talk about it in theory, but to actually have, you know, names and members and potentially some meeting cadence. I don't know if we'd meet every other week. That might be a lot, but we need to at least meet monthly. We may need to meet more frequently.
If we're doing, maybe a question for Beth, if we're adding members as town meeting members or citizens, do we need some sort of application process for that, or can we go through on meeting?
Yeah, I think we should talk about that with the moderator, because she could help. You know, in other cases, we've had the moderator kind of select the town meeting members. Like, we did that for the transportation working group a few years ago. So we can talk about what that might look like once we kind of do an outline of who we want to, who we want to include generally.
And do we want to have a citizen at large in addition to a town meeting member? So someone who need not be a member of the meeting, but I think we, we're already about seven or eight people, so... But we definitely need the moderator's help. Okay. Any other questions, comments?
No, thank you guys for tackling that, and I appreciate the finance committee kind of being the catalyst for this conversation, because I think we've been circling it for a while. And when we talk about capital override, CPA, other revenue sources, you know, we really need to have a strategic plan, you know, and really make sure that it's a capital planning process, not just a capital spending process, because I think we've kind of leaned towards the latter. And I think, long-term, I think that, that forces us to push off projects. And if we are, you know, looking for future overrides, this conversation will really, you know, lead into that override study conversation as well. So thank you.
Yep. It's good conversation. I think what we're going to find in, you know, we discussed it with FinCom. John's going to loop back with capital, is everybody wants the same goal. I just think we may all have slightly different paths to get there, and we just need to try to settle on, on one path. And it's, you know, it's the town manager's capital plan, not to make it all, it's not all on Beth. There's multiple voices at the table and perspectives for other priorities that we, as a select board, think are capital priorities, that these things should be funded first, or these things should get something. You know, it's got prioritizing turnbacks, Mike, to fund the pension. Are there things that the select board and the town manager want to agree as select board priorities on capital that those aren't up for debate? What's up for debate and prioritization is something different. I'm not saying that's where we're going to go, but I think that's, that's on the table as well. So we just need to look at it.
And I think even in our CPA discussion, when we're looking at the governance model there, the, the timing of the capital process is something that, that, you know, we heard as well is something we need to address, right? So that's why we kind of put broad language that we would align with the capital process whenever that is, right? So if it shifts out of the summer cycle to, you know, you know, more in the winter prior, whatever it is, then, you know, hopefully we can be in alignment.
Yep. Okay.
Just kind of a consideration as we set up, as we're bringing up the CPA and we're talking about sort of this as a new type of committee, is whether we have some sort of templates, guideline, committee type of charter, things that we can either use if they exist or, or create so that new committees have an opportunity to iterate on those, but, but have a starting point.
Yeah, I was actually thinking of that, using a work group charter for this one. So we can circulate that to the, the rest of the board as to what that means. And I, actually, I'll reach out to Anthea and see. I'm sure she has multiple versions of one as well. But a charter defines, you know, who are we, what are we here to do, what are the outputs, lots of decision-making. So I think it's great, put some structure on it. Okay. I think that's our business for tonight. Does anybody have anything they want to add before we...
Can I confirm or not confirm that, that you guys need to draft to approve this draft? I know you discussed it.
They voted the warrant, which included...
Which it does.
Yes, it does.
Will you be able to make the correction that you might need to make about the shade tree committee?
Yes.
Okay.
That's why this special one.
Yes. Okay.
So just the only other thing is, right now, your next meeting is scheduled for April 22nd. The really only action the board has to take prior to town meeting, and you can do this up until the second before the article comes up, is you need to vote your positions on each of the articles.
Right.
Unless anybody feels strongly we need to have another meeting, the next meeting will be April 22nd, unless something comes up between now and then, and we can always schedule a Zoom or...
I support April 22nd.
Well, and we've done this in all the town meetings, that we know that town meeting has a cycle and, you know, budget won't be done until the first Monday in May. So if we need to go through what we anticipate the first two nights to do, we'll try to get through it on the 22nd, the 29th.
Honey, we'll make you a very nice spreadsheet.
Before May 2nd, we'll move through it. At least the articles that we have, we generally support because we wrote them. So there's that. We're like one-third done.
Question for me, new guy here.
Yeah, consent agenda in a second.
We can have, because I need to get up to speed on all this stuff that you guys have been working on for a while now with these different articles, of course, it's okay to have one-on-one conversations outside of the meeting, right? Okay.
Any, any...
Huh?
With Beth.
And you?
Right. Any two, any two members can, can talk without violating any open meeting.
Good. Just wanted to make sure, because you'll all be getting phone calls.
That's fine. Makes sense. Okay, so I think, John, if you can do the consent agenda.
Yes, I'm, that we approve the consent agenda as printed. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion passes. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Want to make it? Go for it. No, I would take a motion to adjourn, please.
I make a motion to adjourn.
All right. All those in favor. Jump the gun on us. Thank you, and Cam, I think we're done.